We're going to start off with our public hearing on the budget with our great budget committee. Does anybody have any questions about the budget?
Nothing changed from last time we met?
Nothing? You good?
I'm good.
Okay.
The other question I had, I took it in last month's call, but is the only way I can see whether to come to the meeting? Or is this supposed to be the first one? I can't find it. But I'm not obligated to.
Yeah, until it goes final, it doesn't get put until we...
So wait, that can be made.
Yeah, you'd have to be in the meeting.
I was like, I just didn't know how to do this.
Or if you might still be quick.
Might be.
I can tell you, the budget committee...
Until after finals.
Yeah, that committee did a really nice job asking a lot of questions.
I'm very good with budgets.
Yes.
I brought it to me so that they could sign it, and this is what's going to be posted.
Okay, cool. Anything else? Budget committee meeting, budget hearing is now over, two minutes later. Do we have the fastest ones, or do other people have?
You have the fastest one so far.
Awesome. Okay, before we go anywhere, I thought we'd move John up. So he can hit the road if he'd like. You're saying? You are up, sir, for the deliberative session update.
I was asked to come here tonight.
Okay.
John, do you want to just give us an overview of the deliberative session? We'll host it here, obviously, but anything you want to walk the board through that they should be prepared for? Or how you'll run the meeting, Jackie's first time on the board?
I don't really anticipate any different than it always has been last year. Obviously, we can have it here. And hopefully, we can have it here. And yeah, it would be a pretty straightforward review of the warrant cards, of what the board has to put together. And at that time, have you been through those recordings?
Yeah, I've done that here.
Yeah, so it means pretty straightforward. It's just part of the process for our voting in the town. Since we're the one who heard the town hall, we can do it as well, too. So that deliberative is our first session. Okay. I think it's made so familiar, because the filing improves, and otherwise, the warrants will be read, and then there are amendments or changes. So we moved past read, and then the law amendments are approved. Yeah. Do you guys have one of the usual awards that you put together?
Each of your contract will be awarded this year, but everything else will be as last year.
Okay. Otherwise, that's the usual, and so forth.
Correct, yep.
Yep, no?
Shouldn't be a lot of drama.
There's a little meeting now.
Yeah.
Did you folks have any questions for me?
What's the date?
February 3rd.
Tell you one second.
February 3rd, February 10th.
Correct. Uh, correct.
February 10th.
In the school, are two separate meetings.
Yep.
So, yeah, the school is, you guys found it, did you?
February 10th, John, at 6:30.
Yep, so... Yeah, and then the town, the town hall, or is that part of the meeting? I anticipate that the town meeting will be the town hall, and that's when the folks will set up here, or?
Yeah, makes more sense.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah.
Everybody good?
Yep.
John, thanks for coming in, man. Appreciate it.
Yep, yep. Thank you, John.
All right, man, appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to the minutes.
Hi, I'm Angela. Um, on page two, the fifth paragraph from the top, it should say, "No longer can pay for all services."
No longer what?
On page two, it's the paragraph up, and "No longer can pay for all services." It's just missing the C. And then the only other thing that I saw was Jane motioned for us to adjourn. She seconded it. I did not.
Where was that?
The, um...
The German?
The Germanist, the Germanist. Jane motioned, "I did not." This was the only thing I saw.
Okay, Jane, do you have anything? All right, I will make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Can I second that?
Awesome, call a favor?
All right.
Here we go. Okay, financials.
Okay, so, thank you for signing the manifest. Before we get into the current year budget, I brought the documents for you guys to sign for the deliberative. This is just the budget, the default budget, and the warrants. So no changes from last time. And then also, Kayla asked me to bring the Newfields School District warrants, the notification of the voting that you guys have to sign as well. So if you guys want to sign those, that'd be great. And then on to the current year budget. Since last month, we've seen an additional $31,245 of expense. I did detail out in the board pack what that makes up. It is pretty standard supplies and just additional books and stuff. Did anybody have any questions on the additional expense? I do have some great news on the revenue side. So we... Well, it is great news, but the reason we have it is not necessarily great news because it's COVID. So we got another health trust surplus, and the reason we get that, and it's not something that happens every year. We did get it last year, we are getting it this year. When people don't go to the doctors, our health insurance provider has to provide the monies back to us because they have a surplus. And so, Newfields is getting $21,037. So that is going to be unanticipated revenue. Now, you have a choice, you could hold a public meeting if you wanted to be able to accept and expend it. If you don't want to spend it, you don't have to have a public meeting, it will just follow the fund balance at the end of the year.
Are we still looking at a current fund over trust for this year?
Yes, $268,721. So you are in a very healthy position.
I would let it go.
Yeah, I mean, let's let it go, let's get it back to the best here.
Jackie, are you in trouble?
And then?
Molly, before you go on, though, I just need to make the board aware. We have the boiler, the old boiler in the older section of the building, which heats the older section of the building. It's probably not going to last life. We actually have Palmer and Secar coming out tomorrow morning because it ties into the chimney, which is already being repaired. But they found that in the, one of the three chambers, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there's been condensation, which has been building up into that, and it's causing it to fail, so it will need to be replaced. The Palmer and Secar is going to come in, we will get three quotes for you, but you're looking at anywhere from $25,000 to $35,000. There still is a healthy fund balance, but I wanted you to be aware of that factor. And no better time than tonight to give you that information. But we will have to replace that boiler to be able to heat the older portion of the building. One thing that we are asking them to do is to look at a double boiling system, so that if one of the boilers in that section went out, you would not be without heat in that section. Because as it is right now, you have the new boilers we put in in this newer section of the building, which heats this area. So it is on a double boiler system, so that if one goes out, you still have heat. So that's something that you look to do in that section of the building. Did I miss anything?
No, if you did want to hold the public hearing, just in case, you don't have to extend the money. If the public hearing is only to be able to spend it, if you just choose to hold it.
When did we need to hold it by?
Just before you plan to extend the money, so we do have...
Does it have to be within this school, it must be within this school year?
Yes, and we already have the money in the bank account. It's just formality to be able to expend it, have a public hearing.
So we could wait two months, if all of a sudden someone's out, and then do it then?
You could wait, yeah.
I say, I'm calling for waiting.
Yeah, let's wait.
So the only way thing I had is, our auditors are finishing the audit from last year, but one comment they have had across all of the districts is, we do review the manifest at the meetings, but sometimes that's after the checks have gone out the door. They're not concerned with payroll, because that's a standard item in the contract with employees, but accounts payable. They'd like to see an additional approval to ensure, to ensure an approval happens before any checks go out. So what we're doing, we're not going to change the process that we have now with signing the manifest at the board meetings, but we're asking each board to appoint just one member that we could email the manifest to, to say, "This is the accounts payable for the week, could you provide your approval prior to Friday?" So if you receive it on a Wednesday, send your approval prior to Friday, to have that pre-approval before the checks go out the door. So I don't know which one of you lucky...
Why don't we just generally make it whoever's chairing?
Sure.
And then you just be part of the position going forward, you don't have to worry about it, it'll just be that.
Sure.
If you guys are cool with that?
Yep.
And that is everything I had, does anyone have any questions?
No, you're welcome to do a few weeks if you're going to tell us we can't afford to move on.
I have to say that...
I'm just saying, the minute you can't, I don't want to see you.
And you guys are the first people to have your documents ready for delivery, that's the next week.
I think for the first...
They're the first one to hear.
Yeah.
I don't want to finish it, but...
There you go. All right, so committees, let's go to the quick ones, safety and security, anything?
No, we haven't, Matt. We have to have safety and security meetings.
It's coming up.
Supertend evaluation. I'm pretty sure I sent you guys what the evaluation stuff was, it seemed fine. David's done a lot of changes at the request of school boards and everything, he's been very, very amenable to a lot of the different requests that have been asked, so that's what we're looking at. Other than that, we don't have a, I don't know when the next meeting is, but I think it's probably sometime this month. And then on to policy.
All right, so first off, the academic freedom, we actually did the second reading last meeting, and that was in the...
Oh, okay, yeah. So that one's all set?
Yeah. So the next one was the parent objections to specific course material.
Yep.
And you'll notice it looks like ours type burns more longer, and I don't know if those go sound familiar. That's actually my first one.
Oh, sorry. Gotcha.
Because I did ask for questions, it's for longer one, unless it was...
All right, so ours got amended?
I think ours did, yeah, because it was the last one.
Okay, so we're good to adopt this, right?
This is the second reading.
No, it's the first reading.
Oh, it's the first reading because we had questions.
Okay, all right. Anybody have any more questions for this one?
I did ask about the school board, not being able to appeal. I was told that there is a small trust, so the parent immediately, the building principal, if they didn't get certain sentences, they were definitely new. You know, and they could eventually come here.
Same girl.
It's just, it's not like they're going to meet and jump to us.
But that's just... It says that they can't.
No, they're saying nothing in this policy gives them the right, there is a policy.
That goes through the...
Goes through it.
All right, so it's just not super clear that there's something else, I'm just saying, this does not... Okay.
Anything else on this one?
Jane, you also had asked about a limit cap on costs to a parent. It was advised not to do that, just because the parent might still have like $20,000. Instead of $500, like a cap on parents, and they're picking up at $15,000. I think I brought a question for you, Matt.
Okay, so that's going to count as our official first reading?
Yep.
Key dunk.
And then the next one is the DFA investments.
There's two versions of this?
One of them is Newfields, and one of them is from the state. If you look at them, they're actually the exact same, it's just one plus state.
Gotcha. Molly, do we currently...
She left, I'm there. Your question?
What do we currently have that investable? Is it not, what is it that's currently investable to this, that would affect this policy? Is it the whole entire fund balance?
I'm not sure, I'll have to ask her. It's a great question.
Yeah, because I mean, this seems like, I don't think we would want to put our fund balance as part of this, so what's an investment? Is it, is it...
I'll ask her.
Yeah, that would be really helpful, so I understand, like, what is applied there?
Any other questions on that one? This is just the first reading, anyway, so it's good to get these.
Yeah, I just don't know what would be helpful, Jim.
Yeah?
It's kind of a weird time.
And the last one?
Yeah, I'm good.
Last one is I-K-F-C, this is the alternative diploma for students with significant cognitive disabilities. Currently, students with significant cognitive disabilities get the certificate of dependence. This allows for the IUP team with the parents to come up with a plan to get a diploma on track with their classmates. And then they can still continue to get their services and head towards their diploma. It just gives them a chance to get a alternative diploma with their classmates. And that also counts for completion of school, rather than just dependence to the school.
Jackie, if I'm correct, too, it's, this policy's not needed at Newfields Elementary School?
No, it's more for like, just to get through. Not a big deal, high school.
Yep.
What's the current policy at NES for... Besides, what do we do normally as a graduation policy for these types of students?
So this would be new to EHS for this year. So right now, it's a certificate of completion, rather than an alternative diploma right now.
Okay, but we don't do anything like this at all for NES?
No, you would not, this is only for diplomas, so it would only be completion of high school.
Key dunk. Moving on, principal report.
December was a great month, we had three different celebrations of learning, one in first grade, which is gingerbread. And they did a lot of contrasting and comparing between the different stories of the gingerbread man. They were also able to talk through some math games and some of the properties that they've been learning in math, just to be able to see the students, six-year-olds, seven-year-olds defend their learning, and really be able to tell you what they're learning was fantastic. Third grade did a Native American celebration of learning. One of my favorite moments of the entire assembly was when the host, one of the students got up and was at the podium and actually had to take a big breath before he started. And I think that's part of these celebrations of learning, is really learning how to present and compose yourself. And he did a fantastic job. And then our last one was, fifth grade, they did a whole unit on raptors. And their unit was kind of unique, because they learned all about the qualities and characteristics of what raptors have. But then they chose a prey and then created their own raptor. And the four different raptors that they created were, some of them were hilarious. Then Mr. K worked with them on creating osanatos for their, for a music component of that. So December felt like it was just one exciting thing after another. Mr. Andruski came to a few, Dr. Ryan came. And then we had a curriculum meeting, an SAU curriculum meeting, where people are sharing out what's happening in their schools. And after our teachers, we have three lead teachers who have kind of taken, who have had training on the celebrations of learning. And after that meeting, several of the other curriculum coordinators reached out and said, "Can you please come to our school and talk us through what you guys have been doing?" So the faculty at NES is definitely leading the way, and the SAU is very interested. When we got back from holiday, I surprised the kids with some hot cocoa. The reason I tell you that is because today, one of the, I was in first grade for a little bit, and one of the first graders came up to me and said, "I have an idea. I think that we should have hot chocolate every day, and I think that we should have it next to the water fountain." And his, you could tell his mind was spinning, and he said, "We need the design process, I'm not making this up, I should talk to Ms. Summers." And I was like, "There you go, it's implemented, they have something that they want," and...
I've got our own little really...
That's it.
That's right. Welcome.
So we are right in, right at the beginning of next week, we start our assessments, our mid-year review on our, where we are with our I-Ready and AIMS Web and our FMP. So next month, I'll be able to give you an update on where our progress is on that. We're doing well.
Cool, are we getting any questions for Susie?
Susie, at the last meeting, when the parents had asked about the spelling...
Oh, yes, thank you. So I reached out to other, thanks Jackie for bringing that up. I reached out to other principals in the SAU. No one does spelling D, but then because it was requested from Newfields, I put it out to the faculty, and it was tempered at best. They were fine to let that go, because we have so many other things that we're focusing in on this year. So we're going to stick with that.
Anything else for Susie? Masking guidelines, anything there?
Yeah.
I was on the call this morning.
Oh, all right, so... What?
Were you on?
Yeah, yeah, me and Susie were on. The meeting focused mostly around really coming back to school. The biggest concern being that a lot of the schools are either at 18% infection rate, confirmed infection rate. So, and some of the schools are on the verge of not having enough staffing to open. They're not there yet. It happened, almost happened at East Kingston, just before the break. So what they're going to do is, they have two options, one of them will be the likely one, which is, the first option, which is probably not going to happen, is to give the kids the opportunity, or the teachers the opportunity to remote into a class if they're COVID positive and we don't have enough staffing. That's incredibly unlikely, because it's a terrible model. But if we are not able to open because of staffing levels and COVID, what we will likely do is call us no day. We cannot go remote, that is not an option. We can only go remote if the governor has declared a state of emergency, that is likely not going to happen. So if they call us no day, then we'll have to make that day up at the end of the year. So the current guidance is to just keep masking, make sure that we're staying safe as possible, do all the things that we've been doing to make sure that we're moving forward accordingly and can keep the doors open. I think there was a lot of questions about how it's going to be communicated, don't know yet. But the other thing that came up was contact tracing. So right now, if they have a positive COVID case, they're contact tracing and then identifying and reaching out to everybody that has been in contact with that student. That is becoming incredibly difficult to do, because there's so many students that are positive. So what they're going to be doing, I don't know how this is going to be communicated yet, is to send out a broad notification, because they can't take up the majority of their time contact tracing. The assumption is, is if you send a kid to school, you're going to be in contact with somebody that has COVID. That's unfortunately the spot we're in right now. They will go back to contact tracing once the smelter spike is over. That's my assumption, that hasn't been discussed. But unfortunately, the majority of schools, specifically the larger ones, CMS, and the high school, are just completely overburdened right now. There's, the amount of kids that are confirmed positive is just getting so high. So those are kind of the two things, the two big things that came out of that. Am I missing anything?
So another part of the teacher coming in remote is that you still need staffing to be there at the school, and so it really doesn't play out very well because of sorts of...
Right, you have to get a sub, or you have to get somebody, there has to be an adult in the room. So that becomes an additional logistical problem, and makes it even more unlikely that we would go with that route. If we get to a staffing level crisis, which I don't think we're close to in Newfields, I think we're good in Newfields, it's mostly the larger schools, then it will be, we'd call us no day. And then we'd have to...
Do you know what time they would call, said sooner?
As soon as they freaking know. I don't, as soon as they know, I mean, it would either be the night before, or early that morning, or as soon as they can. And the nice thing is, is that we're in the later bus route, but I think for CMS, because they get up there so early, that would have to be called very quickly. I don't know about what they would do for midday cancellations. But that's really CMS and EHS, it's not really like we... I don't, I think we've been really good, this school has been really excellent. But just in a, this could happen if we start, if our, if our infection rates gets a little bit higher, but...
Would it be by school, or...
By school.
Okay.
This is not a broad base, it is by school. Yep, thanks for that.
Okay.
Yep.
So then days of the end of the year could be staggered?
Yep. So, you know, if, um, the biggest thing is right now, Brentwood's right on that cusp of not being able to open. So then Brentwood would have an extra day or an extra two days or whatever it would be so they would get back up to their staffing levels. Um, so, and then if that staggered, like EHS or CMS or us, that would end up staggering, um, end dates. So yeah, a little bit of a logistical nightmare on that end of it, but it is not, it is school-specific. It is not a state u-specific. I understand.
Isn't, I was on a call with the state, you know, if you.
Yeah, that was happened today, yeah.
Uh, on Monday with, and he had mentioned something, but can't we, you can remote a class. You can't remote a school.
You can only remote a class. You cannot remote a school.
You have to have a letter.
That's what I thought he said.
Yeah, he has to approve it if there's a letter that comes from the Department of Health and Human Services that it was a school cluster causing them to go. And then you'd need all of your parents to say yes.
Yep.
You need all that before you can call it?
Yes.
That ain't happening.
Nope. So it's, I mean, it's, it's technically an option that's open to us, but.
Well, he made it sound like, oh no, it's just, he didn't get into the specifics, but he made it sound like, oh yeah, anybody can do it.
Right, and then only three schools currently have MOAs that support that option. I don't think we do. I'd have to look at the MOA, but CMS has one and there's a couple of others. So, we, it's not really an option for us.
Yep.
Um, it's an option for CMS and it's an option for, but it's, it's a really big, big, big hurdle. I mean, if you think about CMS, you know, if, if, uh, any, to pick a, pick a, pick a topic, you have so many kids coming in and out of the classroom, it would be just impossible to do that, so. I would expect that if we get to that point, it would be, you're gonna call a snow day? You're gonna call a weather event? That's not weather-related.
But the reality though is though, if you're gonna call a snow day, it's gonna be longer than the day. Because the odds are, you're, it's not like, oh, tomorrow everyone's gonna be healthy.
No, and then what they're hoping is that the, the, the volume within that day, one person go out and then maybe another person go back, so it's not like a whole.
If you're only off by one, but if you're off by three or four, you're supposed, you're going to school June thirtieth.
Uh, not June, I was gonna say, isn't it June thirtieth the last possible day of school?
Can't go into July, right?
That's correct.
So you, it is, what they're hoping is this is.
It's good to be a writer, sir.
So it's like sixteen days?
It's not affecting me.
I mean, they're, the likelihood of that happening, I mean, it's possible. But they're hoping to do their absolute, they're doing their absolute best to avoid that.
I was gonna say, that's like maybe ten actual, like, workdays.
That's a whole rabbit hole, man. Alright.
And the other reason is that they, the reason that they, they don't wanna call a snow day that's not a snow day and/or, you know, remote in is because people have to work.
Yeah.
And they respect the fact that, you know, you might have two working parents that are not at home or two working parents that are home or any mix of that. So, they're trying to respect the fact that people need to do both things. The kids need to be in school, the parents need to do their work. So they're really trying to win it at all possible, but it's the stopgap measure if things get.
Well, that's, that's another timing thing.
Yep. But right now, Newfields is in a good spot.
Yeah.
Um, it's just one of those things that could happen at, you know, the other schools.
The joys of COVID. Yeah, what do you got?
Um, is there anything we can do that's staying in front of the school? Like, is there, I remember when I, here a few years ago, there was the, the plea to ask parents to see if we could apply and it was all these crazy things I didn't actually realize.
So the, the, the nurses will be putting out some type of, either the nurse or the, or David, I don't remember who, is gonna be putting out a, you know, we're, we're getting to this point and it's gonna be contact traced, the tracing conversation, and it's going to be, this is, this is what we need to do? It's kind of almost a plea. This is what we need to do. And it's all the things that we have been doing, um, in school. And, but that's our purview is in school. So making sure you're masking and, you know, Omicron might not be the most, um, health-wise bad for you, but it is very pervasive. So it's making sure that we're still doing the things that we've been told to do and continue doing that. But our purview is the school, so whatever happens outside of the school, what is, is gonna happen.
What about, what are we with that stuff, like our stuff?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so.
Like they need it for parents to like get.
No, we actually, so, to answer your initial question, we've done some things, like we've suspended book buggies, like no cross, um, class. We, by having lunches in the classrooms this whole year, we're not coming into the gym. So we are doing some things that, um, are allowing us, I think, to stay within our own little bubbles in the classrooms. We have a really nice setup, um, that we have a couple of people who love to sub just for Newfields. And so, um, between finagling staff here and, um, those subs, we've been able to cover everything. There are times, like Monday, I was in a classroom for a little while, but I love that because, one, I came as a teacher and, two, it, it gives me an opportunity to be in the classroom. But everybody knows to be all hands on deck. Kind of our mindset is what's the least disruptive disruption for the student body as a whole? I don't wanna pull somebody who's gonna make a major impact on another space. Um, and again, that's why I chose to go in on Monday, 'cause I wanted all the teachers to be in their classrooms, welcoming the students back, and I was able to do that. So, the staff is fantastic about rolling up their sleeves and going where they're needed.
Is there a need though for, like, not, like, I could never sub a class, but actually a body? Like, is, is there, is there a possibility of parents coming in to help with, like, like just bodies?
We, we haven't had to need, we haven't needed it yet.
Okay, but is that a possibility? Like, if we get to a point where a teacher's out, maybe, uh, uh?
I mean, I know there's anything.
Kind of be like, you need to have two people in a classroom, but does it have to be two people that are actually? Or could it be somebody you can just facilitate? Like, we all use a volunteer on a regular basis in the classroom. Like, is that, I mean, it makes the most sense to have a tiered thing for already exposed to this group of kids, so. I don't know. I don't know if that's a possibility.
And like, are there things that we can do, like, start, people aren't to do that? Do we think like getting background, do we, whatever the.
Yeah, so that would be applying to be a sub, so that all those things are in place before we hired somebody on.
I do wonder if now is the time to ask parents to do that?
No, but I think to your point though, what you're saying now, right, about like where this could go in the next month, let's say. If that information was given out to the parents or they absolutely knew, like, folks, for the next month, you gotta understand, this is what could happen.
Mm-hmm.
Then you ask at the same time, with that in mind, if anybody has any interest in being an emergency substitute for this scenario, can you please do the, you know, get signed up to be a sub and blah, blah, blah? 'Cause that's gonna take at least a week plus anyways. So yeah, it might tie into your point, Bobby, that might be the way to try to drum up to have that backlog.
And I, the one thing that they were expecting, but not, it's not known, is that this is gonna last through at least early March. We're gonna be in this for, you know, a little while.
Well, and as you know too, it doesn't, like, half of my staff that's out, it's, they're not sick.
Yeah.
Their kids are. Or their kids are having to quarantine because blah, blah, blah. So you don't even have to be sick to have a huge shortage of people.
Yep.
Just have you here with the sniffles, and the next thing you know, it's a four-day COVID and you have forced notice.
It's not, it's not out of the question that's gonna happen. It's just.
Yeah.
It's just mitigate it as much as possible. So yeah, we could definitely do that.
So basically, that, that might be, if, if it seems a little odd for the school to be putting, or putting it out to the parents, that's something that the PTO could do or even the law, people could say, hey, school body, you know, this is how you might go about that, why not?
Yeah.
But I think with that preventative lens on, now we're upon to think about how we can approach that crazy, you know, that very scenario.
Yep.
Um, the parents do might need to, but at the time, I'd be able to just, you know, your, your options.
Well, here's a question. Chris, how, how many times in the district have we been close to the, oh, snow day, here we come? And by close, I mean, like, literally within one or two staff?
In the district, uh, we were close right before break in, in East Kingston.
Yep.
We were about one staff member before would be, we deemed unsafe.
Mm-hmm.
Unfortunately, as Suzie said, we had two staff members that came back.
Yep.
'Cause of the time, so it worked. You know, Suzie's close right now.
Suzie's.
But what we've done with each principal is kind of said, what's your threshold? And if, and then we check in in the afternoon, if we are getting close to say, where are you at? Do you have more people that are starting to feel ill? So that, 'cause we'd like to let parents know that night so that they can make arrangements for the younger kids, for sure. Um, but each principal kind of has a threshold of how they could manage their building based on the number of staff that would be out. That would put our students that we would consider a safety risk because of supervision.
How many staff would we need out?
I thought you were gonna ask me that.
If you don't know the exact number, like a ballpark.
Six or seven.
Out of how many staff?
Of teachers.
Right.
Um, well, we have twenty-three, twenty-four, six staff.
So you'd do like thirty percent?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. It seems like a ton, but like, I would think we would be more vulnerable because of our size.
Right, that's the deal, right?
Right.
Because it doesn't take much to push us over.
Exactly. That, that would be my thought, but.
But we're also, the classroom, the classrooms aren't mixing.
That's right.
We're, the, you know, so you're not having that, the, the spread in NES is very small. If, if it, anything, my estimation would be.
In theory, but there's also a lot of siblings.
There's a lot of siblings. So there's, there's.
It's not the student end.
Yeah.
On this one. It's the staff end that we, that.
I'm just saying, it's our potential spread. I mean, everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing, but, I mean, in general, like, there is.
It's not, it's not as if our contact tracing is that, hey, you could have been exposed. It's just a classroom. It's not two classrooms, three classrooms unless there's siblings, and that might not even be the case. It's, just depends on how that transmission is going. I mean, there's been parents that have gotten and nobody else has gotten on the family. So it just depends on, yeah, I mean, it's bizarre. So it all, it all depends on, you know, that case-by-case basis. So, I mean, I think we're doing in the classroom for both students and staff as much as we possibly can. And then taking preventative measures is a phenomenal idea.
I mean, we have a lot of backup, right? Like, I just choose not to use it. We could use Jody, but that takes her out of, you know, her daily thing.
Yep.
We have our specials who do, um, you know, they see the kids twice, twice in a week. So if we pulled, if we had to pull them out, that's two more people that can help. Um, because our pairs are usually in the classroom, the pairs can push up and we can bring somebody in so that, that consistency is really good. Um, we've got a couple of part-time teachers who are willing to come in and bring that consistency for us. I mean, that's without even touching our counselor or myself. So we have a nice buffer. I just, again, I go through the checklist of what's gonna be the least amount, the least disruptive for our students. Um, because when they're dysregulated, then they're not learning anyway. Um, so we, so, I mean, I don't wanna be too optimistic, but I do think that we have a nice, um, kind of pyramid of, of, um, people that we can go through.
Good to be devil's advocate.
Please.
I bet you Kingston has the same buffer. And they came pretty, East Kingston came pretty close.
East Kingston came very close, yeah.
You know what I mean? So to Bobby's point, I would absolutely, I'm not telling you what to do, I'm saying I would do absolutely everything possible to have another backup of, if you can get five or six people, that would be a break glass in case of emergency. You might save, you know what I mean? It's just worst case. If you never use them, you never use them. That's great.
They're in the town, 'cause there's so many people in town too that.
Mm-hmm.
They're probably not even, they're not available to the school right now.
Yeah, we have, we actually have a lot of retired teachers.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but they're not, they're not necessarily, they don't necessarily know what to do or what to get, so they might be willing to step up just.
Well, I have a, I have a, I have a PTO meeting tomorrow night.
Yep.
And I can certainly bring it up there and, and they usually unleash pretty fast.
Hell, give it to me. I'll get it.
Okay, John.
I just need to know what to tell people. Like, what, what does it mean, like?
It would be to sign up as a sub.
But what does that mean? 'Cause to me, I'm like, I'm not a teacher. I can't do stuff.
Well, I can, I can draft.
You don't, but a sub isn't, isn't certified or anything.
People don't know that, is what I'm saying. So is there something that, kind of, I don't know.
So a sub isn't left, like, loose in a classroom. There's gonna be plans, whether it's maybe you're subbing for the parent who's taking out for the future.
Yeah, that's, well, that's what I was kind of saying.
You know what I mean? Like.
We're not putting you in charge of the classroom.
But.
I mean, either.
I wouldn't do that to children.
We're going out and, no!
I've actually been a substitute teacher prior to teaching. And you, usually you walk in, there's plans right there for you about what to do each part of the day as a day professor. Um, I think it's pretty, I would like to say easy, especially everything with the little ones.
You want to spend seven hours, six hours with the little ones?
But they're all open, you gotta do your work, you gotta.
Right.
Yeah, no, there's all, yeah, right. And that's gonna take time that you may not have later on when you wanna do.
We can even post something.
Yes.
It is.
It is. Well, yeah, I can't find anything on any website, so.
I don't know, it's, it's.
We, we can, uh, we'll do a punch list to make it very explanatory that Suzie can give out. 'Cause you can, you can, you can put Newfields only, yeah, when you, when you type it in.
It'll ask you, when I've applied to be subbed before, it'll ask you what level you wanna teach or cover, very specifically.
Okay.
I think if, if you're trying to, uh, any alternative, like, no day going into camp and all that crazy stuff, I cannot imagine, you'd have to manage it.
Yeah.
Alright Suzie, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, time for public input.
Sorry, sorry to that.
Good.
You got more?
I did have a question. I mean, I know it's not really relevant right now 'cause we're all asking and doing all the things, but we had this question about sports, free before at the last school meeting about masking during.
Oh, basketball stuff?
Yeah, and you had gotten back to me, but I'm still not clear.
Yeah, so it's still the guidelines that anybody coming into the building is a visitor. Um, and during visitors, you'd be wearing masks in, inside playing sports.
Wow, they're playing.
Yep.
Even though they go to school here.
Correct.
Okay.
It's, it's like we treat it as PE class. Students have their masks on during PE class in all of our buildings.
I, I guess that was my question, is because of CMS they don't, so that's, that was my, it, so it's because it's Newfield specific. Okay, just fine. Just wanna make sure.
And that's practice and games.
Yep.
No, we run a game and have, it, it, yeah, it was, with the high school, in CMS, you'd see, pictures of them playing basketball with no masks on. That's why I was like, what?
If you go to the rim, they're not.
Well, it also depends on what their school policy is, 'cause I know at Pinkerton, our players, they have to wear masks no matter where they're at. Home or away. Or some schools, it's, they do whatever that school is that they're going to.
Right.
Which we're all kind of, I just don't know. Why do you have an answer?
There you go there. Shut up, we got you on. Do you have anything else, mister?
I don't think so.
Anybody else?
If one of the, like, um, whoever's been with, with, uh, the other name, Johnson.
Yeah, did you realize I'm a Jane Johnson too?
Our, our, first, we put the, um, flyer for the vaccine and test silencers into the, to, to, to the area. A lot of people, um, asked for that. We're trying to reach folks that in town that may not be plugged into Sopnia or on, like, so, um, it's really been quite a nice event on, on, at the town hall. Chris, I think we're, um, coming in to back up, we were gonna ask the board here if it weren't for the new town hall and getting into school, but we're, we're there, so.
Cool.
Is, um, quick question on that. If boosters for the twelve and up are available at that time? I don't remember if they're, I think they're getting close to.
I think just today, they, they approved that.
I think they just approved it. Will those be available?
That's what I asked the lady, our contact with the state on Monday. She said, we'll know more. But by, since it's not like tomorrow or just Monday, I think we'll be good. It's, it's almost like we can have.
Yeah, and it's all three or is it just two? Um, is it just Pfizer and Moderna or something?
No, all three vaccines are gonna be, all, all available vaccines are gonna be, um, brought.
Perfect.
There's gonna be a limited factor, um, for comedy. I think they only bring two hundred, they're bringing two teams, 'cause they figure it's gonna be a high-demand time, which is good. Um, and it is always people not, not just in town, so that's the other caveat. Um, but I'm hopeful that, since it's our, people won't realize, you know, I think what I'll try to also do is put out on, Sopnia, whatever door, if it's timed, if there's like a lull, people can come in, so that we can get out of all the.
There's no sign off, it's just show up.
Correct. Yeah, the silent sub I did through that, um, form is just. Correct, yeah, the sign up idea is through that form is just to gauge interest, and it is before there was, you know, stress. People now, people tend to be reactive to a lot of things. And so now people are interested in being vaccinated, it's great, but it does, it's not a, if you still have your ability to get vaccinated, you got to come, for somebody.
Can I ask a question about the kids one?
Yeah.
Since it is a holiday and some parents are working that day, but maybe want to bring their child, is there something they can do in the time to, a caregiver could bring it?
So there are forms that I have, I asked to put on the town, um, she hasn't yet. But I am going to, only, I was going to, if you signed up, I'm going to email everybody who signed up, um, the actual document.
So they just see the documents, doesn't matter.
And sign.
Yeah, and sign, okay, okay.
Cool, that's awesome. Thanks for doing that. That's phenomenal.
In S A fifteen, there's only a booster clinic this weekend, right?
Correct.
That's because it's a booster split.
Booster split, it's, it's, it's put on by the state.
Because it was talked about in our last COVID transition clinic call, that we say we're going to do something else for the kids.
That hasn't been planned yet, not, not to my knowledge, it's been planned, it didn't, it didn't come up today.
And then Bobby, for those who get vaccinated on the seventeenth, will there be a second date for the next go?
I mean, so just as a reminder for everybody, Public Health announces, Rochester is not next door, but has a six-day-a-week walk-in, you know, right now, today, I think it's a five-day, for vaccines, all day, but I, and I believe they're going to be putting one in next year, I'm not sure where or how, but I would recommend if you're interested to go down and wait, not wait till it comes next year. But they're, they're free and they have all, all the vaccines available. That's what I'm making sure of, if they're.
Anything else? Maybe heard from you yet? You, you're all good?
Sure.
All right, cool. Uh, we have to go to.
Typing, she's very excited, very happy to hear, she's not going to type.
That's what I'm going to say?
Typing pal?
Typing pal, yeah. You'll get a letter home if you didn't, I don't know when that's going to come out, but.
We have a lot of times that I go with my daughter with a bag and.
We'll check it.
Actually, the first time after P T, so that'll give you a.
In the coming days, it will be. Who was the third today? The type you called, okay, check it. What did they have, is all that?
It's up to the teacher, but it starts next Monday. Most likely, most of the teachers don't do Monday, we use it as a transition day.
Well, Chris, what?
I just, we did last night, again, some of our kids are visiting because people need to get PCR tests, they're free online, because New Hampshire has a program where you get a test for the two, and they, it's amazing, and I don't know how much it costs, I don't know how it was, we thank them, but this company, you sign up, they FedEx, or you get, the next day, you get the tube, the, the packaging kit, and you do a Zoom, and they watch, it's amazing. And we did it last night.
Yeah, Britain has the PCR tests from home, you just send them out.
Yeah, and then it comes, you send it back to the L three, and we haven't gotten a result yet, but especially if you're having trouble getting your PCR back then, that's pretty easy way it comes.
Can they still sign up, Chris, for the PCR testing? Is that still available?
There was an email today from Ellen about, it's closed in September, I can't remember what she said.
I think, I think it closes on Friday.
But it is still open right now.
So anybody who wants to currently, a student can sign up for weekly PCR testing, and it gets, they get tested every Friday. It's, yep, my daughters will do it, it's just five minutes, it's easy, and you get the test results the next day.
Through FedEx, you know, pretty easy.
Yep, it's through, this was through U N H. So they come, they go to each of the schools, they do the tests for the kids, the, the.
I'll send it to them, you should know.
Yeah, we're already looking, do they like it?
Yeah, it's not a big, yeah, it's not a big, I mean.
It's not that they want to.
Yeah, right? I mean, it's nice because you just get the weekend free of, oh yeah, phew, they don't have, or they do, or they don't, you know, it just frees up the weekend activities.
And it's nice to get some weeks apart, so you've got that clean incubation period.
Yep, it is really nice. So I think, yeah, I think it's, whenever they close, it's going to be soon, but there's still room.
Susie, please thank all the teachers from Rochester, the parents that are here, because I didn't think that you had at all.
What, I didn't hear you.
Just thank all the teachers from coming, the parents, for all, while we are coming into school for a few more, yeah, we have that, this book fair, we have a nice, and we have celebrations for learning, and I feel like we still have a number of opportunities to thank you all, like, all the crap we're doing. And we're, we're doing well.
Yep, they are.
Alrighty, we have to go to non-public. So we can kick you all out.
Oh, so I'm taking it. Part of my job tonight from Joe was to turn off that light, that light down there, if the lights are not turned off, could be, I'm going to hear about it. Turn off the light, please.
I can do that.
Because he came to me five times today. You're coming, this one, this one, you gave me a tour before I did this.
I'll shut it down.
Or stuff, now you've all heard it.